This meeting of the Housing Subcommittee will be conducted via remote participation. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with the right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found in the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public and committee members may intend this, attend this meeting remotely following instructions. That was, uh, that were provided at the top of the agenda. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Pursuant to MGL seven C thirty A, section twenty F. After notifying the chair of the public body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body. Or may transmit the meeting through any medium. At the beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of such recordings. Any members of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission, the chair. The listing of agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Now, all items may in fact be discussed. And other items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permissible by law. So the town of Great Barrington, um, is definitely recording it, and we have a few other folks. That are guests, so you're welcome to record it as well. Um, I believe the Berkshire Edge might be recording it, um, from what I see. So, um, we according, looking back at the agenda, we do not have the, uh, the minutes of November, November seventh to, uh, approve. So I will go straight to Housing Subcommittee's announcements. Uh, so Jeremy, do you want to go first?
Um, I do not have any.
Okay. Uh, Garfield?
I have some things where maybe I should wait until we're into the meeting because they're kind of like questions and. Wonderings, what we could do possibly, kind of thing like that. So not really announcement.
Okay. Um, so I will, uh, since we have twenty minutes to fill, I'll do a song and dance. Um, so a couple of things, this is related to the housing bond bill. That, uh, sent it or that, um, Governor Healy, uh, announced last month, and she was actually in Pittsfield, um. As part of the tour and the announcement of the Affordable Homes Act. Um, to give you a brief update, I'm on a series of steering committees, uh, involved with that. And on December fourth, um, the first Affordable Homes Act Steering Committee, uh, met. Um, I was not involved in that particular meeting, but I'm involved with, uh, members that did attend that. Um, so essentially what they're trying to do is, uh, reach out to stakeholders in the state. And get their feelings about the Affordable Homes, uh, Act as it stands now. Um, the timeline with moving through the legislature right now, it looks like they're going to start convening in, uh, January. And what that means is that it'll be first coming to, I believe, the Housing, the Joint Committee on Housing. Then it will move on to the Joint Bonding Committee. And then on to the Ways and Means Joint Committees, and then the House and Senate. So has a, you know, a long ways to go. Um, but it's a very, very, um, ambitious, uh, bond bill. And there's, you know, quite a few things that I think will, will benefit, uh, the Brookshires, um, particularly. Uh, one item that we did discuss was the real estate transfer fee. Um, which was discussed, uh, recently, most recently by the, the, uh, Select Board. Um, so give you a little bit about that. Um, as it stands with the governor's proposal, uh, she did include that in the Housing Bond Bill, which is, which is, um. You know, I was excited to see that. So that was a big, a big thing. Um, but however, as proposed, um, it, it really doesn't do a lot to help Berkshire County. And the reason being is that, um, it's proposing that the fee would only apply to a portion over a property sale over one million dollars. Or the county median home sales price, whichever is greater. So in Berkshire County, the county median, uh, price is three hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um, so there was some calculations done, and if it was, uh, left as it was. Um, if we're looking above just a one million dollar threshold, meaning that anything oversold over a million dollars would be taken to account. That, uh, at one percent would likely only generate, um, about ninety-eight thousand dollars to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So. There are various, um, groups advocating that it be applied to the, to the full, uh, purchase price of any, um. Residents or commercial, uh, property over a million dollars. So that's one thing that's happening behind the scenes. Uh, the other within regard to the transfer fee. Is to amend the language so that, uh, right now, as it stands, the bonding bill says that it would only be borne entirely by the seller. And I know that there was, um, you know, some talk and some fear residents having to, to bear that, um, transfer fee. So. Uh, some of the amendments that are being put out there is that there's flexibility for municipalities to decide whether it's the buyer or the seller that would pay that fee if it does. If it does come to that. So, um, so basically what I'm saying is that, uh, the bond, the Housing Bond Bill, um, hasn't moved. It was announced, it needs to go through the legislature, through various committees. So, you know, we're looking at maybe, um, the end of the session, which would be July thirty first for it to actually come through the, the process. So. There's quite a few, um, steps that need to, to happen before that. But, uh, having said that, there's, you know, a few things that I think would benefit rural Massachusetts, meaning Berkshire County. Um, she's got an interesting, uh, seasonal communities, um, act in there that would. Generate potentially money for, uh, rural towns such as the Brookshires. Um, in a similar way that the Gateway Cities, uh, funds open up more grant funding opportunities. So she has that in there. And, and various other things. So as a Housing Subcommittee, you know, I'll keep you guys abreast of, of what's happening and some of the policy. Um, that's coming out, but there's, there's quite a few things that I think we can be excited about.
Some questions.
Yeah.
Um, one. The things that the governor is proposing and all these things, let's say they all, uh, pass mustard in, in the house, et cetera, et cetera. What does that mean to us? Does that mean that we are now, things are mandated or, or, or they are, um. Will come automatically, but that's not exactly the word I wanted to use. Um. Will these things be set, uh, 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 cut and dry? In other words, let's say, okay, so it's decided that it is going to be for the, uh, uh, the. The buyer, let's say it to me. Now, does that mean this automatically is put into place in Great Barrington, or do we still have to? Um, pass it for us?
Yes. So all that would mean is that we would, um, have to go through the same process of putting it on the, the town meeting warrant. And the town would vote on it. So the only big difference really is that it wouldn't have to go as a home rule petition. It wouldn't have to go from town meeting to the legislature as a home rule petition, and then we would have to wait for them to do something. So basically. If town meeting decides to, to pass, uh, whatever is put forward by the state. Then it would go. So nothing is going to be mandated. It's just basically give each municipality a chance to do this without having to go through the extra step. So. You know, nothing will be mandated.
Now, after all this is said and done, um, will. No. So, so we won't, we will have to pass it, but, um. So we'll have to pass the town meeting, correct?
Correct.
We have a chance to also push this in our own way, if you will, after to convince our constituents? Or is it just going to come, this is what it says, this is what it means, and there this is it. We, will we be? Uh, having any way to, to, to.
Well, it depends how, how it's written. So, uh, that's some of the behind the scenes work right now is. Whatever comes from, uh, Beacon Hill, from the governor's bond bill, housing bond bill, that it allows for flexibility. For municipalities to decide on certain things such as who pays the transfer fee, for instance. If it doesn't have flexibility, then we're pretty much locked into what, what they would, um, they would propose in, in that housing bond bill. So. It's, it's really wait and see to see where it comes out of it. Um, and the, the municipalities that already passed home rule petitions, they're kind of waiting to see. How their home rule petition lines up with this. So. Um, you know, that's, the transfer fee is just one policy recommendation of many. So I don't want to get too hooked up on saying that this is the only way to go forward because. She's got a, you know, a lot of really, really good ideas about, um, about zoning, about funding. Um, as I mentioned, you know, a seasonal communities, um, uh, policy that would, uh. Pay special attention to rural communities that bear the brunt of, you know, seasonal influx of people coming in and that we should. Be allowed to, to have access to money to state funds, um, easily. So there, there's a lot of things that are in this bill that I think, um, will suit Berkshire County. Um, so.
You know, Lee, I was gonna, Josh, the gentleman that spoke with us was Josh, was it not?
Oh, Sam. Oh, you mean the, the developer?
Yeah, a couple of, well, it wasn't just our last meeting, we had someone speak.
Yep, Sam Nickerson, yep.
Sam Nickerson, okay. Um, I was wondering if we're going to be able to, will we, will we be speaking with the, um, the Housing. Uh, Committee as well, which I am part of, uh, regarding zoning, because you remember if he said. I would like to think that maybe we should work on some of the things that. Maybe we have, I know money is a big issue, but I was wondering. Uh, can we look at zoning? Is that, those are one of the things I think he said was in our way. We're also a smaller community. That might be against us as far as getting people in. I don't know if we've actually had a, had a survey done or had asked the community, because I know I wanted, wanted to know this. What they feel about it and. I also wanted to do today, and I didn't. I wanted to go on and see, because I really think there's some. Someone's building ADUs or tiny houses that I think, I remember seeing this a couple of years ago that they were doing this out West. They're pretty progressive out there, but they were building tiny houses, colleges.
Yeah, yeah. So I believe in Jeremy, um, you're still here, right? So, yeah, so I, I know the planning.
I am, yeah.
Forward, um, various proposals, ones relating to zoning and I know concrete housing is one thing and also. Um, making it, uh, easier to build multifamily housing around, um, Route seven.
So that's, I mean, a lot of that, what he was talking about is like, we have conversations around that. Um, so one of the things is just the whole permitting process, right? And he was talking about the, that, that's, uh, impediments to development because. Um, uh, developers go in not knowing the outcome, right? And so. So the whole idea of, of by right development versus, um. Uh, like going through a special permit process. And so that in the last time meeting, we had passed. Um, the town had passed the, um, like the provision when we include a certain amount of affordable housing. You can do some multifamily by right development in, you know, I think it is the B, right? Um, and, um, so, yeah, but, um, but. When we were talking with him, like that kind of incentives, like, like it was his opinion that those sort of incentives just don't work. You know, you don't get, um, uh. Like, when you have to include something like affordable housing, because it's so, um, it's so involved. Um, and so. In terms of development and getting housing. You know, having, um. Having like some kind of by rights development where there's less, um. So when a developer comes in, there's less question, you know, like, is this going to work or not? Because he talks about how much, how much money is involved in just getting a plan together, right?
Yeah.
To the point where you can go through the permitting process. And so, and then, so to do that and, you know, not know the outcome is, you know, is one of the things that prevent. You know, development. And so, you know, and so the planning board is, is. We've been talking about this for years and, um. And, you know, how can? How, like, is something like this possible, like in certain zones or in certain corridors and, um. Um, and then, huh, you know, is, is it, I guess maybe the question is, is it possible? For the town to kind of get what they want and do this, or is it? Just that the town wants housing and this is like one of the ways in which the town can, you know, I mean, I guess set the table for it to happen. Um.
So is there something that the, the planning board is going to be proposing to either stream?
I don't, I, I, I don't know. I mean, we're, we're, we're. We are always talking about trying to do that, and it's whether or not we get something far enough along the way. Um. Where we feel we can take it to the town meeting. Like, we're going to be discussing it in this cycle. And so like, if we get it to the point, you know, I mean, there's, there's a lot of different. Differing opinions on the planning board about this kind of idea. And so it's, you know, and so. Like it, it, it takes a while to get like kind of everybody on board with something. And so, you know, talking through it and. Like figuring out how to do it, you know? Um, because it's, you know, I mean, special permit is all about control and being able to say no. And so when you have by rights development, it means you can't say no. And you give up, uh, like an aspect of control. You still have the controls of zoning, right? So the zoning all still applies. Um, but you're not able to say no unless the project just doesn't fit the zone. And so.
Is that something though, the voters can decide on that, you know, you at least bring something forward for the warrant and then let the voters decide on it?
Well, yeah, you can't, you can't, but it's, uh, you know, I mean, like, you know, I mean, the planning board is going to do its due diligence, right? And. You know, and so we, so we have to talk about this and get feedback from, you know, the attendees and, you know, stakeholders and all that kind of thing.
Hmm.
Yeah, I mean, so, yeah, I mean, we're talking about, we just haven't, we haven't. Gotten it to a place where we're, I mean, but I know it's, but I know it's something. I know it's something we're going to be talking about in this cycle.
Okay. So you think you'll have something for, for town meeting that is substantial? I mean, I, I really, I mean, at the end of the day, we need more housing. I mean.
Yeah, and so.
Humbersome to go through special permit process or whatever. If we can come, you know, and focus on, let's say Stockbridge Road or, or places that there aren't neighborhoods. Impacted, you know, maybe that to town meeting would be the thing to do.
And so I think, yeah, definitely. And so, you know, with the support of the Select Board, that would go far making it happen.
Okay. I just hope, you know, budget season coming up would be great to get that on the table. So we know that might be. Coming forward for the warrant.
Yeah, but even, even if, you know, town meeting were to pass something. That's, it's still a slow process. It's not like it's going to open up the, you know, the floodgates because just like Sam was talking about. You know, like the kind of development that developers are interested in doing. Are not the size that's appropriate for Great Barrington. You know, it's these really large ones, and we're never going to get that. And we don't, we don't, and because for one thing, it doesn't make sense, you know, to have developments of the kind of size that developers want to do. And so. Like the developments that we're looking for, um. You know, it, it's like, I don't know, it's kind of like niche, you know, it's not really. What most developers are looking to do. You know, which is why we have, you know, there's like so few. People at the table that kind of propose these things, you know, it's like the same old people come again and again and again. It's because it's just like they've taken up as their kind of thing. So.
Well, I will say, oh, yeah, go ahead.
No, no, no.
I was going to jump in, you know, with the Housing Bond Bill, I'm just looking at some of the programs that Governor Healy has, has put forward. As proposals, um, one is a Housing Works Infrastructure Program. For municipal infrastructure investment to support housing development. So she's proposed a hundred and seventy-five thou, a hundred and seventy-five million dollars for that. Housing Works Housing Choice Grant Program, Local Capital Projects to Encourage Implementation of Housing Choice. Um, Housing Works Community Planning Grants, uh, resources to support, uh, advancing local planning or zoning initiatives, which is interesting. Um, and she says, you know, often the biggest, or what it was quoted, is often the biggest barrier to housing production is not lack of funding, but. A lack of permissible zoning. Um, unlocking our communities' land for multifamily development must receive the strongest encouragement at every opportunity. Instead of a preference in quotes for projects that serve multifamily zoning distance require a minimum of fifty percent of funding to be allocated. For, uh, multifamily zoning districts. And she also, uh, talks about having a, uh, setting aside a rural set aside. And the Housing Works Infrastructure Programs to Support Infrastructure, including onsite septic and well. So she's very. Seems like she's very, uh, clued in to the rural, uh, needs. And hopefully some of this that comes through the governor's, um, bond bill might help us, but. I think, you know, on a parallel track, it would be really helpful if the planning board, you know, gives us a couple of things to, to chew on at the town meeting.
Yeah, and we definitely, I mean, we definitely will try, but I mean, part of it is like, you know, having. This, um, this subcommittee and then also with our joint meetings, you know, I mean, it does. Because the kind of things that, you know, I think Sam was talking about, I mean, they're big, they're big ass of the town. And so definitely will need the support of the selectmen.
Yeah, for sure.
You know, they encourage the voters to, to pass, you know.
So do you, do you anticipate having enough time to get it to the Select Board so that we can do some public input sessions or?
Yeah, I mean, the public input, I mean, when it's zoning, we, we, you know, I mean, we. We have to, right? So we have a, we have a, yeah, I mean, we have to have public comment on it.
But, okay.
I just, I mean, if you're looking, I mean. I mean, I mean, we're, uh, I mean, we're, yeah, I mean, it's, it's zoning. So, I mean. Yeah, um. Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think the Select Board can talk about it. Um, I mean, so this is something to talk about at our, our, I think it's something we should talk about at the joint meeting. Um, because if the Select Board is really looking to, you know, that they want to. Like promote this. Uh, I mean, I think it's a good idea. I don't know if you should run the public comments through the Select Board. I mean, there's sort of a. Like there's sort of a process, right, for zoning. Um, and that's generally not it. Um. Uh, so.
Yeah, my question is just wondering timing, if, if we really think that we'll have time, you know, something substantial will come to the, the town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would, I, you and Garfield should bring this to the Select Board and see if there's like, uh, like a will on the Select Board, like, hey, this. We want to see this happen. We want to see, you know, like streamline. Like streamlined, um, zoning where there's like, or we want to see, you know. Special permits taken off for housing development or whatever, whatever it is, you know, housing development under fifty units or whatever, you know, I mean.
Well, can, can you guys, can you give us something? I mean, I'll, I'll be happy to advocate. I just, I just need something in hand. So I know what you guys are, are discussing.
I mean, I, I don't.
I don't want to cut you off something and then have it in the.
I don't know if we're there. I mean, we, like, generally, I mean, our. Town is like super progressive, right? We have like our zoning. I mean, if you read some of the zoning in some of the other towns, it's like. I mean, our zoning is quite something. I mean, I, I, my folks live in Sandersville. It took me like half an hour to read their zoning bylaw, you know, like what? And, you know, it's, I, I mean, and like with these kind of programs, like Great Barrington is really good. At, you know, when these kind of state programs come online and accessing them. I mean, there's, you know, like the. The, um, accessible housing, uh, development that's down past Guido's. I mean, that was like. You know, that was, uh, smart growth, right? Um, and so that was the, a thing that, um. The Boston had proposed and that, you know, we were one of the early adopters of it. And, you know, and that development happened because of that, you know, that was like an increase. So that was where the municipalities got to opt in by, um. Uh, it was, it was like a collaboration, like we had to get these zones approved, but by, uh, choosing particular zones. Um, where you could get increased density, right? And so this, the smart growth was, um, you get more density than, um. Uh, is, would be allowed by the current zoning. And then, um, and then the town's got some kickback. For one, you know, they got, like, the town received funds for this when we set up these zones. And then for each unit produced, then the town also receives funds for those. And so, you know, I mean, I mean, like, we're, we're sort of that way. I mean, the, the planning board is, quite frankly, we're, we're. We don't, um. I'm not sure that we'll make that grand leap that, um. That Sam was talking about in one cycle. I mean, usually we're a little bit more, um. Uh, like measured and will, you know, will make that one step and then, you know, and then. You know, and then sometime later make another step. And so like, um. I'm not saying that, I'm not interested in seeing how something like that would. Like seeing like something like that in action, like trying it and see like, hey, you know, will we get any development? Because we get development, but we get very little, you know, it's, it's kind of slow and, um. And so, uh, yeah, I, I don't know.
So Jeremy, I hate to cut you off, but it's six o'clock in the Affordable Housing Trust folks.
Okay.
Yes.
I mean, you know, I mean, this is, this is like a big discussion because, you know, I mean. Like there's the fear side of this where. People imagine like if you take off these things, it's just going to be this deluge of things, but that's not really the case. Because there's not really people lining up just waiting to kind of, you know.
Yeah, but what I'll say. Sorry. Um, you know, i- if we do move it along. And get it before the voters and, you know, have enough time to have the proper public input, you, you know. I think it's, it's good to have something to go forward with rather than, you know, years and years and kind of.
Well, but still, you, you know, I mean, it's sort of our charge to do our due diligence with it before. You know, I mean, yeah, there's plenty of time for, I mean, if, if the public would take advantage of it, I mean, some people definitely show up and we get input along the way. But like doing our due diligence to kind of go through this before taking it to the public body, right? Before taking it to town meeting. Um, I mean, hopefully, I mean. You know, I mean, bringing up this idea, I think is, is a super good one. And for the Select Board to talk about it in their meetings. And get the public interested in showing up to the planning board meetings so that, you know, they can be part of the process of.
Okay.
But I think it's really like the Select Board should be like, hey, we want to see, you know, because it is a, it is a dramatic change. You know, the.
So, so I'm gonna, I have to cut you off because I don't want to hold these guys, but I'll, I'll back to this and what I can do, I can bring this to the Select Board and just start raising the point and then we'll, we'll hone it. Um, but welcome the Affordable Housing Trust, uh, Fund folks. Uh, Fred, if you want to do, um, uh, actually, you know what? Did I, I did, did I do attendance for us? I don't.
We did not.
Okay, so let me do this. Um, so I'd like to call attendance for the Housing Subcommittee. Uh, Jeremy? Are you here? Jeremy, are you?
Sorry, I muted. I am here.
Uh, Garfield?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I'm here and Malcolm is absent. Um, Fred, is there anyone that would be willing to do notes, minutes on your, in your group for this part of the?
Well, I guess I can, I suppose. Um.
Thank you.
It's hard to do it and, and, and participate.
Or is anyone in your group able to do it or? I don't know. I guess you, 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 you.
I will take notes before I can, but I don't guarantee that they're going to be. Anything. It sounds like we joined in the middle of a very interesting discussion there and. Uh, so we really would like to be participants in. These kind of discussions on a much grander scale. And I think that's one of the things that I'd like to talk about tonight is how we can work together instead of just an occasional. Uh, check in.
Yeah, Fred, what we did is we just had a check in and I gave a, um, a brief update on the Housing Bond Bill where we were. And just mentioned where the transfer fee, um, proposal was. And then we got into a grander discussion on zoning and then, um. What was happening with the planning board since Jeremy's on the planning board. So that's how we kind of ended up with planning board. But. So Jeremy's, uh, suggestion was for the, the Select Board to, to take the lead on saying what we would like to see on the warrant to increase housing or, you know. Incentivize development or, um, you know, bring funding to housing. So that, that's how we landed on that.
I, I mean, I, I don't know if lead is the right thing, but just make the Select Board's will know.
Okay.
Like if they really want to see, I mean, because.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that. Can you repeat that?
Uh, me?
Yes, please.
Um, so I, I mean, I, I don't know. What I, what I was looking for is like if the Select Board really wants us to, um, to really pursue. Um. You know, looking at, um, housing by right in certain situations, you know. You know, beyond what we have already, so this is multifamily housing in certain situations, then like just make that known to us, you know. Um, and then we can, you know, and then we can definitely roll with it. Uh, it, it is a discussion that we have, we've been having for a wa- a number of years now.
I just didn't know, waiting for the select board to, to bring it.
So like where, like the farthest we got with it is what we saw. Um, last um, last cycle with the um, with the. Like if you're providing a certain percentage of affordable units. Along the corridor, it's basically the Bs, right? It's um Stockbridge Road and then some, some south, um, some on South uh Main. That you can um, you know, develop a certain amount of multifamily by right, and so. That's, that's as far as, but we start, when the discussion started off much more broadly. And um, we started off with like, uh, can we um test, like do a moratorium? On special permits for multifamily housing for a period of whatever years. Like that's.
Uh, Lee, I think, yeah.
Yeah, Jeremy, sorry.
Point of order, we need to make sure that we're uh obeying the open meeting law and do our.
Yeah, Jeremy, let's um head off that. Okay, so that, that's, that's for another time, but thank you, Jeremy. Um, so let's go back to the agenda.
And I, I think they were looking for attendance for the trust.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
And would you like to do that, Lee, or would you like me to?
Uh, would you do it, please?
Yes, so joining uh, in a joint meeting with the uh planning select board housing meeting is the. Affordable Housing Trust Fund and uh roll call members um. So uh Christina, are you here?
Yes.
Uh, Garfield is a dual member, he's our select board member, so Garfield, you're here.
Yes.
Um, Joseph Mathid, are you here?
I'm here.
Uh, Enanda, are.
Present.
Present. Uh, Bill Cook. Do you see Bill Cook on the participant list, uh, uh, Lee?
Uh, no.
Might be under Deb.
No.
No, and I'm here, Fred Clark. So um, we're very pleased to be here. Uh. We think that we've got a very important role in uh talking about all kinds of housing as, as you know. You all know, housing comes in many, many forms and uh, there's a lot to talk about and a lot to, to coordinate there. And uh, I think these kind of meetings are wonderful because they help us to break down our silos. They help us to coordinate what we're doing and um, I for one would like to, you know, really. Uh, see if we can encourage this. Lee, I, I need to tell you that uh Christina needs to leave before seven o'clock.
No, actually, I don't have to anymore.
Oh, okay. I was gonna make sure that you got a chance to talk.
Thanks, thanks.
That's Bill Cook actually on the town of Great Barrington. He came in on his rogue side, so that's Bill.
Yeah, so uh also joining us uh from the Affordable Housing Trust is Bill Cook. So uh, all members are present right now. Um, in addition, we are going to have a very short. Separate meeting for the Affordable Housing Trust this evening at seven thirty with a separate Zoom login. So I hope uh some of you or all of you can, can join. We have one item on the agenda and I hope it only takes a few minutes.
Okay.
So thank you, Lee. Um, it would be helpful for us, I think, if we could just sort of review what we want to accomplish tonight. And what, what items you have on your agenda for us.
Well, I, I, I had you, you know, you suggested a few new items to expand our agenda. Um, so I can go over them, you know, I kind of saw it as, as general discussion more philosophical. Um, I don't really see us. You know, the housing subcommittee making a decision uh either way, but I, you know, we, we added it to the agenda so we sh- we can start the discussion. Whether we get through all the items, I, I don't know, I probably not. Um, but, you know, the, the kind of the general question was how should the town fund affordable housing? And what role should the trust and the housing subcommittee play? Now, that's such a, a big, a big nugget to, to chew on right now, but that's really kind of at the heart, because we have. You know, these, these groups that um are stakeholders in the community and that really want to. Uh, you know, make it easier to uh repurpose housing and create housing and protect housing. So, you know, how, how do we work together? So really, how, how do we fund it? It comes down to money in, in um, you know, really in a nutshell, so and what role do we want to play? So. Yeah, that's kind of the bigger overarching theme, and then we, we broke it down. Um, for those that are on the uh. A- as guests, I don't, I can go through just the, the, the questions that were raised and the agenda. If you want me to, not that we're gonna hit everything, but uh CPA, uh direct grants to projects versus a lump sum to the trust. Uh, should large grants be left to the CPA? Uh, number two, review initiatives. Uh, small leverage grants slash loans to first time home buyers versus loans to developers. Versus loans or grants to create ADUs and tidy homes. So basically dedic- dedicated funding stream, so it comes down to kind of. You know, the initiatives on um, really promoting the, the building of housing and repurposing the housing. Number three, we review any no cost initiatives, so this could be zoning changes, education, housing seminars. Connecting residents to existing programs. Uh, number four, regional approach to housing. Number five, master plan discussion. So that's kind of in a nutshell, some of the things that were listed on the agenda. Um, so how, how do you guys wanna do? I mean, do you wanna have a philosophical, uh, I don't think we're gonna really knock off things. Here, but it, it might be a more philosophical, not that we are gonna be the people that decide this, but. Um, I'm curious of what your thoughts are.
You know, I think we need to start at the very beginning where we talk about what kind of town we wanna be. And what kind of housing we're talking about. Because I think that we, we as the Affordable Housing Trust have a role in that, so that we're all on the page of knowing. Which direction we're pulling towards. I, I think that. A- a- and further, and, and I'll just say this, because I know Ananda has her hand up. Uh, and that you, you alluded to no cost options. Those are some of the things that I think we need to be talking about. Whether there's zoning issues or whether there are education issues. I've come to the conclusion, you, you, you know, you started off by, on number one, we're talking about how it all comes down to money. Well, I'm not sure that it can, because I don't think we can buy our way out of this crisis. I think we need to figure out. Some smart ways to do it, just because each grant is seventy-five, hundred thousand, hundred fifty thousand dollars. And that buys very little, but at the same time, market forces and others are eroding. The historically affordable housing. So I, I really think that we need to be very smart about it and I think we need to. Get more creative and uh the Affordable Housing Trust would like to have a um. A role in that, so.
Enanda, did you wanna go ahead?
Well, I wanted to suggest that the larger question about what town, kind of town we wanna be is addressed in the town's master plan. And that that's, in, in renewing and updating that plan is where the town addresses that as a community. And then beyond that, I think some of the questions on the agenda aren't for us to answer. It is for the CPC to answer. How it, what it believes is the best path for Great Barrington CPC to distribute CPA funds. Um, and then it is for the Affordable Housing Trust, based on wh- how, what kind of funding we do or do not have. To make decisions about how we use them, including for, including in terms of grants. Um, so I'm not, I'm not sure what the function of having those discussions in this space is. And how we could make them useful discussions in these space, in this space.
Thank you, Nanda. Um, Garfield?
Yes, I had to agree with Fred in what you had also said about things that are um. Relax, but in turn, no cost, is I think that's a big deal. And everything is always money and we need to find a way around it, if that's possible, like Fred alluded to. And I think zoning's a big deal. Um, getting rid of possibly the things that are, make it hard to do, like some of the special permits. I know we have to do with the planning board, but it seems a little more realistic to me to look in that direction as well. And I wouldn't mind following that.
Can you explain to me what you mean by the no money?
Well, things like zoning, right, that we don't have to what pay for. Um, you know, someone you come in and or um building, et cetera. Um, if there's no zoning, it's a some of the zoning changes, then allow. Uh, different structures, et cetera, to be built. So those are some of the things, I guess you could say are no money.
Okay, but having said that, um, for example, when the planning board passed the bylaw. That made it easier to build ADUs, that did not increase the um amount of ADU. So we can't assume that changing the zoning is gonna make it an easier, and what Sam Nickerson said in our meeting, uh, who's a local developer. You know, i- it's, funding does come to it and, and zoning does come to it. So it's, it's not as simple as changing zoning and, and thinking that, you know, there's gonna be a lot, a huge increase in, in housing production.
But it might be a little more viable, Lee, for us as far as money goes and that is one element and I think. It needs to be examined.
Yeah, I'm not saying that we shouldn't uh approach zoning laws, because I think that's, you know, enormously important. I'm just saying that that's not necessarily going to be the golden ticket to increasing housing productions.
Well, that was one of the things, if I may cut in again, about the ADUs and said that we're speaking about. I don't think, there's been no one knocking down the door to do this. There's been no one knocking down the door to do tiny homes. So maybe, I don't know, do we, do we push this ADUs aside? I mean, really.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
It's been on the back for a while.
Yeah, I mean, that comes down to funding, because you, you, you make it easier for them, people to build ADUs, tiny homes. And then we still need to provide some incentives or grants or, so in the end, it does come down to money a lot of times.
Always does, yeah.
On the issue of, of knocking the ADUs, that's not the purview of this meeting.
Right.
It's been zoned and the, and we will, the trust will vote on this.
Yeah.
When we vote on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, by the way, I didn't finish, I, I, the question was on the side from what I was going to share. Um, first of all, I, I don't agree with Amanda saying that the CPU. Is this what your name is? Uh, is, uh, supposed to be making all those decisions. I think we as Affordable Housing and doing all kinds of discussions and seeing. How the money is being distributed, have lots of to say about it and could be advisory to the CPU. Uh, whatever is your name?
CPC.
CPC, um, rather than just give them the, the right to make those decisions where the money.
Yeah, I just, I meant, I don't mean, I mean, we can say whatever we wanna say. We don't have any power to be. To them. They, they have the sole power to vote on how those funds are used.
I think, I think, and, and Anna was saying, and not to speak for you, Nanda, but just, you know, we kind of have to say, this is the money we have to hand. We're asking for this, this is what we have in our account at, at this point.
Well, well, I, I don't agree with that, so. Um.
I'm still not finished, so excuse me, I have to go back to finish my, because that's one point. And then second is, in terms of money, we never, although we talked about it maybe a year or a half ago. And, and never explored something called fundraising, town wide. Not townwide, Berkshire-wide fundraising, or townwise be wide, because we are here in a. Great Barrington uh government. Really fancy balls fundraisings. People, people uh raise millions of dollars on fundraising. Like greenagers and places, so it's possible to do the fundraising for uh from, from both rich and poorer. Uh, and it just needs to be organized as a big event. And I just want to put it this on a table, because I don't think we talk enough about this. There is so much money in the Berkshires, so much money, and people want to share. So that's one thing that I was really passionate about.
Joseph, did you have something to say?
Um, yeah, so on the point of the CPC, so. Um, so I think the big thing about the CPC is that. The CPC, as I understand it, is created in the same breadth as accepting the CPA, or sorry, um. The A, the Affordable Housing Trust is created in the same breadth as, as, as a town signing on to the. You know, the CPA.
They were, they were linked.
And, and it's, I think it's kind of like, I think it's up to a town whether they wanna create an HTA, a Affordable Housing Trust Fund. But an Affordable Housing Trust Fund is the mechanism, is like a mechanism for like having more directed. Spending of affordable housing monies. And right now, the CPC does not e- accept that, believe. They do not, they don't have that, that, uh, 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 it's a generalization, it's my perception. Uh, they perceive it as, as that they have a bunch of money and their job is to distribute it across. These three categories and we are, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is, is merely one of the many supplicants. Looking for that money. Um, so there's no sense that uh the Affordable Housing Trust Fund has a special role. Uh, involved with affordable housing. It's this idea that it's just the same as a construct, the same as. Um, uh, a um, uh, commu- uh CDC. Um, and also that, that those, that there's a sort of obligation to actually balance across the three priorities. Like that's, like, that's just like a essential tenant of, of that group. So, eh, um, I'm just saying that the question, like, that. It as constituted, there's nothing that we can do, that, uh, speaking as ATF. There's nothing that we can do to, to dislodge that from CPC, because that's the way that the power and the money flows. Um, but speaking as, as this um, this group here. I would urge the select board to look at that, because it's select board that, that defines that role. The select board can say that, actually, no, there, there has to be a pass-through function or. Uh, so that CD, so that um CPC could. Uh, have a certain amount that, that just automatically passes through to ATF or. And, and, and then just separate from that, there's also a function that. Um, the select board could declare an emergency and say that, that they are going to dictate to CPC that. Um, uh, that the, that a, a certain amount has to go to um the affordable housing priority. And because it's like, that's the way that the power flows. It goes, it goes uh select board, I mean, I guess maybe that would have to be done at a town meeting, but. It's the, the town meeting accepted something that, that simultaneously created CPC and created ATF.
Thank you, Joseph. Uh, Nanda?
I just wanted to um add into the information you were providing, Joseph, that there's um. Part of the special relationship between CPA funding and affordable housing trusts is that CPA funding. Once in an affordable, once in the affordable housing trust's hands. Um, can be used in a procurement process that is more like what you and I would use. If we had to purchase something than what towns are normally required to go through. And that's true of only CPA funds in the hands of a trust.
That's right, we don't have to go through the thirty B procurement process at all.
Yeah, thank you. So, so two things, um.
And, and also those, but the, the other caveat with that is the funds have to be, um. So, like, the CPA funds that have gone to the trust, sometimes they're for particular things, and so it would have to be just general use. Or it would have to be specifically for procurement. Um. Right, it couldn't, it's not just the CPA funds that, that the trust has.
So it, it's kind of like a, it's a philosophical um question, you know, with, with the CPC, it, it's essentially, you know, project driven. So usually, you know, when you go in front of the CPC, which I'm a member of, you know, you have a specific project, you have a to- a budget, you have a timeline. You have a goal, and so it's really a philosophical discussion whether the CPC is willing to have, you know, to grant a, just a, a. A chunk load of money, a, a sum of money to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and, and there lies, you know, the, the big disconnect. You know, we might think one thing and, and they ultimately get to decide what they wanna do, because the voters decided at the CPA. You know, CPA funds will, will um fund, you know, several categories, not just affordable housing, and. And if it was only going to be for affordable housing, you know, the CBC would have to decide that, there wouldn't be this, the select board's purview. They could build it into a special um item in the budget for Affordable Housing Trust, which we did last year. Um, so so that's one thought, and and that's, you know, one of the thoughts about the transfer fee. Is that that would be a designated, um. Funding stream that would go directly into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for this purpose, to have a lump sum each year. So that's kind of like why the CPC is on this side and then the the transfer fee is a funnel. And it uses the um, the the market that has, you know, caused this this issue to address the issue. So that's, that's where the parallel comes from, but ultimately, it's the CBC that makes this decision, so you know, whether. Affordable Housing Trust gets money from the, um, from the, um. From the CPC, you know, we don't know, but we have what we have and we, like, uh. Kritia said, you know, there there's other funding streams we could go to, we can go to the select board, you know, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund could fundraise in general, but. You know, again, we're working against nonprofits that are also doing fundraising, so you know, there's that as well, so that's all. Um, Kritia, Amanda, did you have, or Fred, I'm not, I kind of lost. Fred, did you have something?
I I do, um. I I think that there's a bit of a disconnect with what the CPA committee is doing. And some of the grants, and that is, they don't meet often enough to have any kind of oversight or any kind of. Uh, accountability for the funds that they grant. They rely on staff by and large to follow through and do all of the. Paperwork and 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 that sort of thing. Well, staff means Chris Rambold. We're a very small town, we have one staff member who's completely overworked and does a good job balancing. If those same grants came through the Affordable Housing Trust. We would be able to monitor them, we would be able to oversee them and man, basically manage them. And and in in a fiduciary way, so that uh the town is getting what it thinks it's getting. Um, and we don't add any overhead, we're another town board, we're created by town, you know, meeting and and answerable to the select board. Um, so. The other part of that, of course, is the argument that we've made repeatedly. Is that real estate doesn't always have a nine month uh lead time, that. You can't always. Wait uh for the one year round of uh CPC funding. That takes nine months or so to 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 get through, we can be much more responsive to the market. Um, there were uh six apartments that came on the market this summer. And it was, they were offered to um one of our local nonprofit partners. Uh, before they hit the marketplace and they had been historically, they were in a historically affordable neighborhood. Uh, it would have been wonderful to keep those apartments as um as affordable. But instead, we lost them, they went to a private developer, they're going to double the rents, uh, and. We had an opportunity at that point to 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 make a big difference, six apartments. Went from a thousand dollars a month to two thousand dollars a month, and that's, that's the bottom line right there.
So Fred, what I would suggest, and 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 I can't remember if the Affordable Housing Trust is on one of our agendas or if you've. Asked to come to a select board agenda, but you know, if you were to, because let's say. You know, the CPC, you don't get what you're looking for, right? Um, you know, in terms of step two, you know, what what's plan B? So are you, are you dependent on a special article in the budget? Um, you know, where are you in terms of the money that you have now in your kitty, you know, where is that going to go? So I I think that might be a helpful step in terms of, okay, if we don't get what we want in the CPC, come to select board, make your pitch. Um, you know, are you going to do private fundraising, you know, with the money you have? So it's it's kind of with the the um, the Southern Berkshire Emergency Services, you know, they are in need of money and they're making their pitch. To the select board, so in in the same way, it would be great if the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and and you know, build up the trust, get, you know, get your. Get your group in front of, um, you know, the public, make your case. Uh, you know, have a plan B if the money doesn't come through the CPC.
Well, I I I know that there's people with hands raised, but we have been doing that, we've been trying to get out, uh, with letters to the editor, we've been in. Uh, I've been writing a blog, although I haven't kept up with it. Uh, there's uh Bill Shine with his Argus uh reporting is, uh. Wants to do a podcast uh featuring some of the members from the Affordable Housing Trust, so we're getting that ground roots. You know, in your own, um. Discussion with with the select board, uh, about the uh transfer fee. I appeared. Two times, three times in front of uh the select board. And in support of the transfer fee and talked about how. Uh, gratified we were, but the bigger point is, we saw so much support for people. All across the board, uh, that for funding for the Affordable Housing Trust. Many, many people, a lot of people, uh, including some very active. Members who've been against the CPA. Law from the beginning, said, if we're going to have a CPA, let's give the money to the Affordable Housing Trust. That was very universal, and I think the select board heard that, or I hope they did, so.
Mm hmm, thank you. Oh, no, Bill, okay.
Well, I would just like to address the fundraising that Kritia brought up. Early on, the Housing Trust decided not to do fundraising events like that because we'd be competing directly with construct and the CDC. Which we don't want to do. We should be getting our money through the town or the CPA. That's all I want to say about that.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, Jeremy? Jeremy?
Sorry, it takes me a lot on you, um, uh. Gosh, I totally lost my train of thought, um. Let me see if I can get it back.
And then come back to you?
Yeah, please.
Um, I think. You know, I just think that. There's an application before CPC, I'd like to respect that process. Um, and respect. Whatever decision needs to be made, and I think that, I think that. It across the state and in Berkshire County, they're just, it's valid for there to be different models for the relationship between CPA funds. And housing trusts, um. Do I have a a personal preference and also an argument as a resident and taxpayer? To have it look one way, yes, I do, but. I'm not on that body to make that decision. Um, I do think that. The larger question of funding a housing trust, if our community is going to have an affordable housing trust. For it to do meaningful work, it does need money, and it needs a significant amount of money. And I think that we, the la, over the last two years, we've put in some useful. Frameworks for thinking about what a, what the trust can do across the spectrum of. People in our community from stabilizing people so they are part of the solution by not losing housing. All the way through supporting private developers and doing acquisitions, including ADUs. Um. I did, I just, the, if the vision is to continue, is to fund a housing trust in Great Barrington. Uh, on a project basis through CPC, um, at. Two hundred, three hundred thousand. And. And in competition with other housing projects that are quite good. Um, and to, you know. Have ten thousand coming in from short term rental tax and then maybe we, you know, if we're doing. If we do all the things right, yes, we could maybe sustain a a a budget line item in the town budget of another two hundred thousand. That is not going to get us where we need to get, and so we, if we aren't having a larger stra- strategic conversation about. Get how we get to a budget, um, of like a million annually. We can do nice things that will help. In tiny ways, but we will not do anything to move the needle or be part of a solution on housing in our community. So I think that's the larger conversation, is the housing trust a vehicle for solving the problem? Or is it a a vehicle that helps a little and helps a little is still good, but, um. In my view, it's not worth the time and effort. Um, that it takes on so many people's part to do, um, so little. That we should be going for something, we should be going something that can have larger impact.
Thank you, uh, Garfield.
Okay, well, first of all, are you saying you don't think we should have an affordable housing trun- trust? And I did.
No, I'm saying I think we should, and I think, but I'm saying, given how much work. By so many people that goes into it, we should have one that's really impactful, not one that just helps out a little when it can.
Right now, that's where we are, I I have a question, maybe a little naive. Um, and we, have we, or do they sit in on them, and I don't know if we sit on theirs, but can we meet with the CPA? Whoever's giving us this money, is this, is that a work?
I'll respond to that, at when Fred and I went with, before CPC for their first step of the application. Um, there was a direct suggestion in the spring, once we're out of application season, to do some kind of. Coordinating meeting to understand the overlap.
Yeah, Garfield, that's a good suggestion.
Think we need it.
Because I think if we're outside of the application period where there's less. Adversarial kind of discussion. Um, I think we can get to a a more philosophical uh approach. And 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 really, you know, get to know one another, get to know one another's needs. I mean, I learned something at the last CPA, uh. Committee interview for step one and uh I was listening, I I hope that we. Uh, can respond to their requests.
I just want one other thing, and and I don't want to cause any rift, and I'm not hopefully being a pain, but. I didn't want to say I'm not knocking ADUs, I just don't see that as being viable, and I'm not sure. How much time we should be spending if it if it's not, we've been talking about ADUs down.
Through one more meeting and then we can stop spending so much time on it, we can either vote it up or down.
Yeah.
Um, Joseph?
Oh, um, so I just wanted to clarify, so I I literally, I've spent a lot of time reading the CPA, and so I I had like a a memory. Uh, that I I thought, um, I thought I had seen something that that it was like in the text of the CPA that created a affordable housing trust fund. But I guess that's not true. Um, but I guess the thing that I was, that I was latching on to is that in CPA on the, the. The Massachusetts level authorization that lets towns do it, uh, it says. A city or town may appropriate money in any year from the Community Preservation Fund. To an affordable housing trust fund, so I think that's, I think that's the thing that I had like, that got like stuck in my head. Um, so it's just a, just, just to put that out there, that that it is built into CPA, that that concept, but it's not. I had a different memory that that they were like. They were actually defined in the same, the same document, which doesn't seem to be true.
No, that that's not the only funnel, you know, you nonprofits can apply etcetera. Um, whereas transfer fee would specifically go, the only way the transfer fee works is Affordable Housing Trust Fund, so. You cannot apply, you cannot have a transfer fee in your municipality unless you have Affordable Housing Trust Fund, it's directly. Linked to that, so possibly you might have used with the CPC. Uh, Kritia? Uh, you're still muted.
Uh, yes, sorry, I would like to respond to Bill Cook, uh, about, uh. Uh, he said that we shouldn't be competing, I. After listening to what Amanda said and realizing, actually, what we do is very different. Than both construct and CDC, extremely different. And uh, I really think we should compete with them for the funds. Uh, I also feel uh from, just know from talking to people. That ADUs, there is a big interest in ADUs, people still don't know much about it, people still are. Uh, asking questions and still considering, it takes time to make such a, uh, such a big. Decisions about, as you know, getting mortgages, etcetera, etcetera. So I wouldn't be too fast about getting rid of ADUs, thank you.
But we have a vote, uh.
Uh, Jeremy?
So I, I mean, I think Joseph is right, you know, when CPA was created. Um, um, in the state, the, um. Uh, allowing municipalities to create affordable housing trust. That was part of it, and there was this special relationship written into the law, and that is like the. Being able to get around thirty B or not, um, have to follow thirty B like the rest of the town. For, um, when procuring property using CPA funds, and so the mechanism to do that is a trust. And so like there is, there really is, he's right, there is a special relationship. That can exist between, um, uh, a CD, uh CPC and the trust. Or the town and trust, or mainly CPA funds and the trust. And, um, but the way it's, the way. Um, CPC is is really the gatekeeper, unless we were to change. Um, like our adoption of CPA, meaning change the um CPA adoption in our code. Um, so that it has something like select board oversight or something like that. Um, because it doesn't, like CPC has. Has like the full authority to say, you know, to approve things to town meeting, now, of course, it's a town meeting that has to. They're the ones that actually give the funds to different projects, but. Um, it's written in that you can't, um, unless the CPC has recommended it to town meeting. It can't be passed by town meeting, and it can't be passed over the amount that the CPC has recommended. And so that's really the power of the CPC, and so I, at least how it stands now, I think. Like the meeting, like the off cycle meeting with the CPC, it's it's really got to be collaborative, it can't be like this mandated thing unless you. Returns to town meeting and change the way that it's set up. Um, so because the select board really doesn't have that power, um, over CPA funds. Now, I think it goes a long way if the select board were to say like, hey. You know, this is a crisis, we really need the CPC to step up, and we need, you know, sixty five percent of. Or, um, seventy five percent of the funds to go to, uh, you know, to go to the trust each year. Like the select board can definitely recommend that, if they do that united, then, I mean, that goes a long way, but. Um, but in terms of them saying this is the way that has to be, I don't think they have that power.
Um, so one, one thing I just thought of, you know, if let's say the CPC is the gatekeepers of this funding. From CPA funds, you know, one alternative is similar to a citizen's petition. Uh, you know, a member from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, you know, in addition to appealing to the select board as a special article, you know, let's say. We we want to double the amount that you gave to us, you know, maybe as a citizen's petition. Put in, you know, similar to a a resident, I think, brought in something for the parks last, last year and said, we want an extra fifty thousand dollars, whatever it was. And that was passed, so make your case as a citizen.
But that's town funds, right, that's not CPA funds, you can't.
Saying, well, like, you're, you're not being heard, and you want to make your case, and it's not going through the CPC, yeah, this is just.
It it's, remember, it's the special, like, if you're talking about procuring property, it has to be CPA funds. Or else the trust has to go through the thirty, what is it, um, the thirty B process? And, you know, and I'll send that around, I don't have Kritia's, um, email address for some reason. Um, but I'll send that around and really take a look at that because it's it's significant. Like what the town has to do in order to procure a property, and it's not quick, and, you know, like.
Not talking about properties, I'm talking about funding, just, you know.
Well, I know, but funding, so, yeah.
And they think that's one of the benefits of Affordable Housing Trust is that ha, it. Allows the town to allocate funding to a body that has a different set of tools for using it.
Yeah, so what I was saying is the citizen's petition, and I I could be wrong with this, but there could be a citizen's petition saying, I make a petition that the town, uh. Uh, um, appropriate X amount of funds into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and and let.
Right, and what Jeremy is saying is that. Those funds are not equal to CPA funds.
No, exactly.
You can do a lot of things, but if you're talking about, you know, acquiring a property or land.
Yeah.
Completely different.
I'm not talking about that, I'm saying making a direct appeal.
Yeah, but the trust, it doesn't have to be a citizen's petition, the trust can. Uh, the trust can appeal straight to the select board to put it on the warrant.
I'm just saying that that's not a guarantee, so you have five people that would have to do that, but I'm saying that the other way of approaching that, if the, if the select board did not do that. And if the amount in the budget as a special article was not enough, you you could have that one opportunity, so I'm not saying do it, but I'm just saying you have another. Another.
It would be a hard sell if the select board's not behind it. Because, I mean, you're talking about affordable housing and, you know, it's not the, like, the town climate is, I don't know if it's there. I mean, I think you need the select board support.
Joseph.
Um, so is I, I just wanted, um, so I think the reason why we keep talking about CPA, I I know you're you're talking about like. Multiple stream, streams of money, uh, and it's like, the transfer fee, that's great. Uh, it's, you know, it's good, they, the transfer fee is exciting. And the, but it's also like with the current, um, with the projected cutoffs, it's, it's not necessarily going to be that much money. Um.
It could, it could.
Yeah, I know, but but but. The reason why uh I think we have been talking about CPC um so much is because it's this pool of money. That is not already uh called for, it's you're not taking away from anything. Right, so it's like, so if we ask for money at town meeting, then it's like. Well, how are we going to balance the budget, is it gonna, isn't it uh raise taxes? And the point of the of the CPA funds is that it's money that's already been taken, that. That has to be allocated and so, and you know, and and the criticism that that has on social media that people have raised and said. They, people don't even like that 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 money got taken in the first place. But if it, if it, it there's, they're, they're explicitly saying that if it's going to be taken, at least it should, it should go towards their priorities, which is affordable housing. Um, but I think that's the reason why, why the the conversation is has has circled around. CPC and then, and then I say, I just, I have no objection to the transfer fees, just. We're looking at at the available pools of. Of money that doesn't add to the budget, because it, because we're seeing the adding to the budget as this, this huge battle, this, this third rail. Um, that we're not, you know, that we can't fight, so that's, that's why we keep looking at the only pools of money that are there. Um, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it it really is, you know, circling around to what we said in the beginning is is making. A case to the CPC off cycle, you know, after we get through this application process, make the case, come up with a strategy. Show the budget, you know, have that philosophical uh discussion. On that, uh, you know, and then do the same with the select board and and earn that, you know, trust or earn that um. Uh, really partnership and collaboration, saying, okay, we're in this together and this is what we want to do, so I thi- I think that's a really part of it, because. Sitting on the CP, my CPC myself is, you know, when you have an open space application or historic application, it's really hard. To turn that down, knowing that the voters agreed to the CPA because it was going to address. Open space and recreation and historic and affordable housing, it's not just affordable housing, I mean, that, that's what we pitched it to. And really are, we we have to honor that, we have to honor that we're looking at these four categories, so. Um, it it's, a- and plus you have, you know, a group that are not all aligned around affordable housing, they have their own distinct. Um, uh, you know, thoughts about what they care about, so it's really, really hard to wrangle that group, so. In theory, w- we feel what we want to do, but in reality, it's it's very, very different, so I think opening ourselves up to other funding streams. You know, a appeals, direct appeals, fundraisers, transfer fee, you know, just making the case to where we can get. Uh, alternate sources of funding, that's important and we have to have a plan B. Um, Ananda.
Uh, excuse me, I'm.
Oh, Chris, you want to go first, sorry.
Yeah, um, it's actually the same subject, I would like to find out, so you're the only uh uh. Funding you have is the CPA as a CPC at this point?
And the town.
It's the most valuable funding.
And uh, what about the part revenue money, is this coming to you or no?
Well, that's town fund, so indirectly that comes through the budget, so we, you know, when we have a special, a special article, so last year, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Received money through the special article, um, so that's, you know, indirect.
We haven't seen it yet.
Okay, so if you have different streams of money, uh, you don't necessarily have to say no. To the open spaces or or historical.
That's separate, so the CPC has their pool of money that they control, the town has their pool of money that.
No, but you do have different streams of money as a CPC. Or only CPA, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
They only, they only have CPA money.
Oh, they only have.
To oversee CPC money, the Affordable Housing Trust can have however many money streams we can dream up.
Okay, thank you so much.
They're constrained to those, those four categories. So, okay, are we happy with continuing this, I mean, obviously, we're not going to get in any tangible.
Bring up something else, I wanted to bring up something else and add one more thing on those CPC, I think that with the CPA funds, like, at your point. Lee, that they are designed to be used across categories and in fact, there's no way not to, there's a minimal amount that has to be used in each category. Um. The. You know, the thought I have as a resident of Great Barrington is. We are, we are, I, and I like, I want to see the preservation projects happen, I want to see open space, I value all of those things. In this community as a resident, as somebody who grew up here. We're in an afford, we're in a housing crisis. And so I think that that's what makes it to me worth talking about. We may need to do things differently in a crisis than how we want to do them forever. Um, and so that's the discussion I think is worth having, not a discussion that says. Inherently, we shouldn't care about open space or. Um, historic preservation, like, those are all, those are both things that are. A critical component of what makes our community what it is and and absolutely needs to continue to be cared for.
Absolutely, yes.
To be clear that in talking about changing any cha- possible changes. To a relationship between how housing funds happen within CPC. Or i- in the relationship between CPC and the housing trust, it's not to devalue those other things. Um, the other thing I just wanted to bring up is, it does feel to me like this, this meeting space. Could be a very valuable place to talk through and think about some of the the types of things that might take. Longer term work from multiple parts of um. Town government, and so that makes me think, Bill, about your ideas about taxes. And I hand it to you unprepared, Bill.
Are you talking about the residential exemption?
Um, I mean, I know that it came up when I, early stages of conceptualizing ADUs where you were talking about, well, you know, what would really make a difference is if. If you added an ADU that was restrictible affordable housing. That you don't increase the property value based on the ADU, so that was like the place I encountered it, but my intent, my. My sense is that you've been thinking about this in a lot of.
Say that this committee has brought the residential exemption to the select board, so that has been, you know. Put forward this housing subcommittee and it it did land with the select board and we started discussions. Um, we went with the transfer fee first, but that still is, is out there with a executive summary. And it was passed by the planning board and select board to to for further discussion.
Lee, I need to say that we, we could be a valuable resource in that discussion too, you know, I I I'd like. To see us included and people who think that we are more than just a funding source. But can be a valuable resource, because we study these things, we, we understand them. Uh, from our conversations with others and and from our our involvement. So I'm, in the future, I I would like it if we could get involved with those kinds of issues too, because they do affect our work.
Yeah, but I will say to Bill though, because I I know Bill, um, you know, we were talking about this, uh, you know, probably a year ago when this first came up, but. Um, the feedback that we did get, not to go too much in the weeds with the residential exemption. Uh, you know, for owners of of housing that rent affordably, um. That it was a kind of an unknown number, so let's say you started giving um. Tax incentives or, you know, tax exemptions, property tax exemptions to owners that rented a portion of their home affordably. There was that kind of unknown number, how many people that are doing all, doing this already would come forward looking for an exemption and how much would that cost the town? And it was that number that we didn't, we weren't able to control, like, how much would the actual town lose because of that? And that became very, very murky, so those, that was the immediate pushback I had. Um, and also, the money has to come from somewhere, so if we grant. Uh, property tax exemptions to owners of, you know, that rent affordably, you know, that money's going to come out of our budget, so where is that?
That's not true, that's not true, if if someone is. Has a property that they're renting affordably. They're not going to. Or if somebody creates an ADU on their property and they don't get taxed on the excess value that they've. Put on their property, the town hasn't lost anything, the town is still getting the same amount of money they always got. They're just not getting the additional money from that ADU.
Well, I'm saying, like, say for a multifamily, right, so if you have a a multifamily split in two. And all of a sudden, you're not taxing the four thousand square feet, you're only taxing the two thousand square feet. That two thousand square feet is is money that's not going to the town, that's what I'm saying, is that so mu- some money will be lost to the town. Talking about ADUs, but I'm saying that there is a, there is a factor coming into this that the town will lose money, and I'm not saying I don't, I agree with it. But I'm saying the initial pushback was, okay, how much are we going to lose, which we didn't know, how many people are now renting affordably that would come up and say, hey, I want my money. And in addition, how much money would be losing, I mean, I, obviously, the trade off is more housing, so I'm completely in favor. Um, but I'm just saying that was some of the early pushback.
Um, yeah, so we we, at the very beginning, we were talking about these different categories and like the 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 free things, we were talking about zoning, um. And I was thinking about this sort of, this sort of like fuzzy category of of like negligible costs, or I don't know how we would describe them, but like. So, so what, what Bill's talking about, so it's just like separate off, like the, you're talking about subdividing a a property. But just the idea of like adding an ADU, let's, we could just say like, doesn't add value to the, to the house, so it's just win-win. It seems like, you're just, you're just saying like, right, thank you for, thank you for creating a new unit. Um, so I was thinking about like, uh, sort of other category of that, which is. Um, any of the like, uh, permitting, like permitting costs and permitting. Uh, like, in like, in, in, I'm a little bit vague on this, but like, whatever costs that are associated with, like, I don't know, like, I I think I, I forget, I had. I had something put on my house and I had to pay like fifty bucks for it, right, and that's fine, like, so it's some cost that the town assumed. But um, uh, those kind of things, could they just be waived for anyone who's doing rental? To say like, oh, you're doing rental, don't worry about it, it's on us. And and it would cost something, it would cost something, but like, I'm sure the town doesn't make a ton of money off of like fifty dollar inspections.
Yeah.
Just say like, no, yeah.
Yeah, and that's something I would love for the planning board to take the lead, because they really know those nitpicky things that, you know. You add this and this and this, you know, the septic costs and all the hookups and, you know, they might have more insight to that and they could come to the select board or whatever and say. Hey, if we were to um, to allow for this and not charge people if they're renting affordably. You know, if we have that, you know, I I think that we could push for it, I just, I just don't know what that, what that is, so I would look to. Uh, Garfield, you know, I guess to Garfield.
Remember, planning board doesn't have that power, though, that's.
No, no, but just to to raise that, raise the issues, like you, you intimately. Some of the things that people are dealing with when they want to, you know, create housing, so if they're creating housing affordably. You know, we could waive the septic, you know, the connection, the water connection, we could waive the blah, 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 you know, that there's various things that we could probably waive. To save people money, if we.
I mean, I think. I think it's, I mean, yes, but it sort of takes us away from what we're doing. Um.
We're incentivized.
Well, yeah, but we're, we're, like, that part of it that we're doing is with zoning, right? And um, or at least making it possible with zoning, right? So, or, and and when I say we, I mean, it's really the town in the end, because the town has to approve it, but. I mean, that's sort of what we're doing, I don't know if it's, if it's really us to decide this money stuff, I mean, I think that really is a select board conversation. And I think you guys should take it off, if that, because you do have that power. And, you know, I mean, we can talk about it, but it, it's, it's sort of, it's, it's kind of a waste of time if you guys. Just are like, well, no, you know, and then we spend all the time talking about it.
What I'm saying, Jeremy, is is if you were, as a planning board, if you were to give us bullet points and say, these are the things that you could waive that are in your power. Or, you know, just to raise, then we could have that discussion, but I I'm only making up things, I'm saying, you know, connection to water, septic. You know, planning.
Nobody's going to build a house for a fif- for one time fifty dollar fee.
No, 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 but I'm saying a a series of incentives, this could be one of many, this could, in addition to the residential exemption, I mean, that we, we could. Carving out things, I'm just saying as a part of a bigger incentive package. To incentivize people to rent affordably, we could say, hey, if you rent affordably, this is what we're going to do to help you, that's all I'm saying. So, um, so we've kind of gone around circles, do you guys want to take a break or move on to another agenda, I mean, this is kind of a big philosophical discussion. Um, I'm, you know. I'm okay with wrapping it up, we've been, I know the housing. This is five thirty, I'm exhausted. Uh, anyone from the housing subcommittee wanting to stay on or?
Well, I'm not sure that we've already gotten into the meat of the discussion here, we've talked in circles about funding. Where, you know, as some people have said, we have very little uh ability to influence that situation. Um, I mean, I know there was talk that the master plan lays out. Uh, a strategic plan for our town and 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 that sort of thing. But I really think that we need to look at this as a, as a collective on a town basis. In a more um. Collective kind of way, a collaborative kind of way with all of the players on the table, you know. There was talk uh that the uh about redoing the master plan, which is ten years old and the, I I've gone through it, I've recently re- reread the master plans. Cover to cover, and it's pretty impressive how many things have been accomplished since that was published about ten years ago. Uh, and I think, you know, we need to do that, but we need to do it. We do it so often in our silos, in our little, you take this because this is your board, you take this because this is your board. We need to get our private nonprofits uh involved, we need to get our community stakeholders involved. And we need to talk about how. We can collectively do this, I'm not absolutely convinced that it's a funding issue, as Ananda said. It's probably a million dollar problem in that per year. Um, to 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 really try to make an impact on this. We need to either figure out how to leverage whatever money we have, or we need to um. Figure out how to, how to do things collaboratively. Um, I have a few ideas that I'm going to bring to my board, uh, and I'll be happy to share those um. When they come to fruition, uh, because I think that we, there are some things that we can do. That either leverage the available resources that we have or use very little. Uh, you know, the example is, we purchased a a below market piece of land on North Plain Road. With that hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar commitment. We've gotten a ten thousand, ten million dollar commitment from Habitat and from the state to develop it. I'm not saying that's a model that we can repeat, because it takes six, eight years and a lot of, a lot of effort to get, you know. That done, but it is something that we can talk about how we can. Use our other, other, other aspects, other resources. Um, I I also say, I, in the last year, I wrote a letter and went and testified in front of the planning board about inclusionary zoning. On something I feel very, very, very uh strongly about, and I got nothing but a cold shoulder. That it would cut down on um. Uh, development, uh, that that developers wouldn't want to come, well, Lenox has this, Williamstown has it. Williamstown has it. Great Barrington should. Um, for those of you who aren't familiar, inclusionary zoning is when a developer comes in and says, hey, I want to build so many units of market rate housing. We say, okay, if you're going to build ten units of apartment affordable housing, one of those units has to be an affordable unit. So you can, you can come in and you can take all of the resources from our town. You can, you can make your money because we've had a great town that we've invested in, but we want something back. That's it. When Ian Rush went in before the CPA last year, he made an incredibly compelling argument about mixed uh, income housing. But he wanted to be paid for it. What I think is we have a lot of resources that we're giving away to somebody who comes in here and allows them to make a lot of money. We need to say, you have an obligation, Mr. Developer, when you come in and you build twenty units to give us three of them or two of them, or whatever formula comes out. As I say, Lennox has this. If we had done this with a nursing home on Maple Street, Maple Avenue, we would have been able to get two more affordable housing units there. And I think we should have.
The nice thing with the inclusionary zoning is if they don't agree to it, they, they have to give money, a certain
Yes.
Affordable Housing Trust. So that's another way to get funding.
But from what we've seen. Work, though. That's, I mean, that's what we've seen, like at least what the planning board has been presented with. Is that we haven't seen where it works. And like, we did basically do that with the last thing that we passed, the, that corridor thing, right, in Stockbridge Road in South Main.
And, and, and in the overlay, in the Housatonic overlay district, it's there too.
Yeah. But you have to see like, how many units did we get so far with it, right? It was, it was also there, it was also there in the, um, um, oh God, what is that zone called? So where, um, James and, uh, Searls and, um, Dolby and, uh, well, and then it also included, um, um, the, um, the, um, oh my gosh, the what's your call site? Where they're affordable housing, but that was a forty B. And so none of them actually used the zoning. They, the, the inclusionary zoning that we created. So I don't know, like, we haven't seen any of it yet developed in Barrington yet.
That doesn't mean that we shouldn't pursue it. I, I think, you know, I'm, I'm.
Well, we've done it and it, and it hasn't done anything. Well, I mean, we've done it for a long time.
We're, we're over the ten percent now, so forty B doesn't apply.
Yeah, yeah. Um, Garfield.
Yeah, I'm gonna have it for ten days, you guys. Lee had mentioned that she was exhausted. We have another meeting. I think we should have another joint meeting. I think we should do it now. Because the housing has a meeting after as well, and I'd like to
Yeah, Garfield.
Maybe have my own life after tonight.
I, I think, at least for us, uh, would you guys like to meet again, or are you sick of the joint meetings?
I think we'd have to have a pretty clearly defined purpose for meeting. I'm not sure that it really makes sense to us to just keep talking about the problems, uh, without, you know, coming forward. Yes, we would like to be involved, but we want to be, we, we don't want to waste your time or, or, or anyone else's. We want to be very productive about it.
You said you thought it was important to be a player, so maybe we should do it again.
Yeah, I mean, I would love to have a, a report from, you know, after you go through the step two and also to hear what's happened with your RFPs that have come, come before you. Just so maybe that would be valuable to kind of see, you know, where are you guys headed?
So, so we already had, we already had one RFP that we voted on, we approved.
What is that?
It's a, it's a two, it's a house. Yeah, you want to describe it, Fred?
Uh, we approved the uh, two, two bedroom apartments to be, uh, built as affordable and to be restricted as affordable in Housatonic, uh, at our last meeting. We had a second one, but we were, uh, our meeting ran over and we were unable to bring it to a vote. So we're going to be talking about that again in future meetings.
Can I make a suggestion about how we could work together going forward? Um, what about, what about having, having the Affordable Housing Trust have appointed seats as part of this committee and then we can just build an ongoing collaborative work that whoever fills those seats can report our work to this group and they can, and they can also report back this group's work to the trust. And if there are thing, if there end up being things that the larger trust needs to discuss, then it can come back and the trust can do that and feed in.
So, so, I mean, this body is, it's a subcommittee of a, of a joint meeting that we, the select board and the planning board have, right? And so it has to go before that.
Yeah, I, I don't know. Feasible, but.
We're a subcommittee of another meeting.
Yeah, I mean, Garfield's already involved.
Yeah, I mean, Garfield is, is our point person, so he's. So we, we already have that essentially, Ananda.
Right.
And yet we still needed these.
Yeah.
Well, Garfield, I'm going to be relying on you to give us a report and to convey our, uh, work then.
Yeah. Um, so do you want to just, uh, we'll have you approach us if you want to have a joint meeting? Is that how you want to, um, you know, Garfield will update you?
After our meetings, what you're saying?
Yeah.
We'll update them after we meet.
But if there's.
Well, and Fred, maybe when, maybe there can be a standing agenda item um, on our agenda for that update.
A report from the dual subcommittee.
Right, we're gonna expect it.
I mean, that, that's how we do on our housing subcommittee. We have Malcolm and Garfield, I mean, uh, Malcolm and Jeremy speak about planning board updates. So, um, Garfield could just fill that role and give us updates.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
I split that role.
I think that, as I said at the beginning of this meeting, I, I really do think that there's a role that the Affordable Housing Trust can play that is much, much broader than simply as a funding pass through. Um, I think that we can be incredibly helpful, uh, and can, as a committee, devote time and work to, uh, specific, uh, development of, of, of ideas and projects. So I think that we, we need to be a player and how we do that is, is something that maybe our committee needs to talk about. Maybe, you know, you guys can think about, um, but we want to be involved.
But Fred, I think that, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Jeremy. I'll go after.
I mean, I think that, I mean, I think that's really, I, it's really a great idea. And, I mean, I think the way to do it would, um, after you guys talk about it, um, you know, approach, uh, approach Steve or Brandy, who talk about that, the joint, um, the agenda for the, uh, joint, uh, select board, planning board committee or meeting. And, um, I mean, that, I mean, that's a perfect way, at, at least then you get both the boards there. You know, I mean, I, I, I mean, it's hard to sort of talk about it with the whole town. I mean, I think you've already addressed how you're going to do it with the CP, with the CPC. But you could, you could get, you know, select board and planning board in one shot just by getting, you know, I mean, we can bring that to, we can, we can, like, the, our members can bring it back to that meeting. But if it gets on the agenda, then you can speak to it.
Yeah, I mean.
Um, Mark, Mark Brohensky just told me recently that he's planning on a sit down with Steve Bannon and Chris about a housing strategy, kind of a sis, you know, situation. So, you know, I think I may, uh, do a full few bullet point ideas that, uh, our committee has, uh, on, on going forward.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I was going to suggest that, Fred, if you can give us, and, and I'll work with Steve and Mark on this, a sense of what exactly, um, how the housing subcommittee in the town could be more helpful in terms of if it's policy or if it's funding streams or whatever you have in mind.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I'm aware that, you know, we can't just expect people to give us money without saying how we're going to use it, or at least, you know, we have a track record. We've been incredibly successful. And we've been good stewards, um, of the funds that we've used. We think that we've been really, really productive. Um, but going forward, I think that we need to tell uh, the rest of the town and the rest of the government, uh, how we would be using the money, how would be, we be, uh, how we see things shaping.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's.
And, you know, I, I would be happy to advocate, um, you know, as a select member and for the housing subcommittee to, to advocate for a bigger role, um, for the housing affordable.
Yeah, I'll back with you, yeah.
So, you know, I just need some bullet points and, and, and really kind of what we're doing. So, uh, Fred, maybe we can work offline and, and get some bullet points together and work together on that.
Okay.
So, all right, so, um, I'd like to open it up to, uh, citizens speak, if that's okay with everyone. Okay, citizens speak. I have Vivian. Okay, Vivian, hi. You're unmuted.
Okay, am I okay now? Thank you. Um, yeah, I wanted to follow up on a few things that were mentioned. Um, um, Christina talked about how, uh, she has, uh, heard of many people interested in the ADU. But it's a new concept in our town and, uh, it, although it's been, um, the bylaws have been adjusted accordingly, uh, there really hasn't been any source of, uh, of, um, in-town, uh, education or consultation or anything like that. And it would seem to me that, um, we could, uh, request, um, use of very nominal funds to provide that kind of educational and, and consultational role for people. And it could generate a lot of people who could then go on their own, um, having been shown what, what, uh, where they could get loans or, um, uh, mortgages or things like that in order to do it. Uh, but we can't just assume because it's past and that those of us who are interested in more affordable housing uh, are interested in this, that this is something that the, the, the general public has been, been made aware of in more than just terminology. They need to have the opportunity to, to speak to people, uh, in the, in the accounting field in the, uh, architectural field and, um, um, and, um, and, 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 and get some ideas about what resources there are for people in, in, in Great Barrington or in Berkshire County as a whole. Maybe we could get some support for this effort from, from other towns who would like to also make this uh, more accessible to, to their current residents, uh, who are, who might be interested in, in, in doing ADUs but just don't know where to start. Um, there's a related issue, um, which is, uh, I don't know about on the municipal level, but I know that there's a nonprofit group, I believe a nonprofit group up in Vermont, uh, that helps people with shared housing. Where there isn't any major construction like in an AGU, but that people are, um, there's a, an intermediary source, uh, where people who would be interested in sharing housing, um, can, can have, have help and also have someone for, for screening to prevent them from being exposed to people who might not uh, be within their realm of safety or, or, uh, or, or functioning. And then the last point I'd like to raise is that, um, one of the things that I thought would make housing more affordable for those of us who are in a dominant, uh, demographic ra, ra, uh, range in town, which means, uh, senior citizens, uh, was the, uh, the, the town meetings passage, um, pretty overwhelmingly of, uh, senior tax deferral. But there are two barriers to that. For here again, like with the ADU, people say, oh, this sounds great, but they didn't really understand what would be involved to do it themselves. Um, and also for the town, um, the town then, it, it doesn't cost the town money, but it does postpone when people finally pay their, their property taxes. And this could affect, if it's done on a small level, which it is right now, uh, it's no big deal. Uh, but if, if we would make this more available and, and dozens of seniors would like to do this, then it would make a dent in, in our current budget, uh, or not, although not in our overall, you know, long-term funding. Because the, the money does come through and it comes through with interest. Um, but there is a, an initiative from the, um, 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 Berkshire, not Berkshire, Boston, uh, College. They have a center for, um, uh, research on, uh, on retirement. And they did a big study nationwide, and then they boiled it down to what they recommended for, um, for Massachusetts on, um, making the state reimburse all municipalities for money that, uh, went to, uh, provide affordable, um, I mean, uh, senior, uh, senior tax deferral, so that there was no even short-term impact uh, for the municipality. And I don't see why you, you, you groups, both of you groups, you groups together couldn't suggest, uh, to the select board that we ask our state representatives uh, to see what they can do at the, at the state legislative, uh, uh, level to, to change this. I mean, the, the, the state is, has, you know, many resources. And they wouldn't lose out on, they here again, they would get the interest from the residents when they pay, when they could pay, uh, pay up their, their, their taxes. Uh, but in the short term, the, the town would not have to, uh, be, be involved and, and accept a very minor way of, of reviewing short, you know, small applications. It's not a, it's not a very in-depth process. So those are three ideas. If you like, I'd be glad to outline them briefly in an email.
Yeah, uh, Vivian, if you want to send me that, I can, um, bring that to the select board's attention. So thank you. Thank you very much.
I know this is citizens speak, but if I could just briefly address Vivian's, uh, first issue of the ADUs. You know, the, uh, select, the planning board spent a lot of time developing their ADU bylaw. But the, the chair has said that their role is to set the table. And, uh, they sent the select board and the Affordable Housing Trust a letter suggesting that the Affordable Housing Trust would be a better vehicle for implementation of the ADUs. We discussed it. We decided that that is correct. We also, um, reached out to many different sources and we've spent the last year uh, developing an ADU incentive. The whole purpose of the ADU incentive is to be a demonstration project so that we can go ahead and have successful ADUs built. And then crow about it, then tell everybody all about it. Unfortunately, you know, it's taken a long time. It, it, it takes a long time for these things to wind their way through. But we are, we are now, uh, ready to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other, um, citizens would like to speak? I don't see any, uh, any, uh, media would like to speak.
I'll just.
Anyone else? Vivian, do you have one other thing just really quickly?
Quickly on, on, on Fred's comment, I've, I've sat in on some of the Affordable Housing Trust meetings about the, uh, uh, ADU, and I think what they're doing is great, but I don't understand, and if you could just quickly clarify this. Isn't this to provide some financial incentives for doing it? Does it talk anything about just educational and informational, uh, process?
I think it's a great point.
Fred, do you want to answer it real quickly, or do you want to talk offline to?
Sure, uh, we're happy to talk to anybody about it. We are providing some incentives and we are going to provide some education.
Great, thank you.
All right, great, thank you. Uh, so do we want to circle back around, not right now, whether we want to have a joint meeting and what that agenda would look like? I think, you know, we, we need some time to digest what we've spoken about. And Fred, I can talk to you offline, um, on some action items to bring forward to the select board, if that's good with you.
Sure.
Housing subcommittee members, Malcolm's not here, so what I can do is, is send a doodle poll out or do something. Does that work with you guys? Just rather than taking? All right, so housing subcommittee will, uh, will circle back around and we'll also go through the minutes by then for our next meeting, the November seventh minutes.
Affordable. Affordable housing people, um. We need to have a very quick, no more than fifteen minutes, I hope. Meeting at seven thirty. It can't start before seven thirty, but luckily we're right up against it. It's going to be a separate Zoom login. And I hope that we have at least four people there so that we can uh work on our. One item on our agenda, so please go out, come back in, please. Thank you.
Did you send that? Did you send that Zoom? Because I don't see.
You just took my hand.
Garfield, did you want to speak?
I did. I just wanted to reiterate that that I think it's a great idea to um. Educate the people and. Kind of like find out what they feel, what what they're thinking on the re-ADUs. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, great, thank you. So I will um ask for a uh. Um, for us to wrap up the housing subcommittee meeting adjournment, um, could I take a? Someone to motion for that adjournment of the housing subcommittee?
So moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
Jeremy, Jeremy, that's the second.
You can second it.
I'll second it.
Lee, you can second it.
Second.
All right, uh, so Garfield, uh. Yes to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay, I'm yes and Jeremy.
Yes.
Okay, so thank you all for for uh joining us.